The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of May 10, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on this afternoon's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are also given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the city clerk who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on this afternoon's agenda or in a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any public speaker cards for items not listed or items on the agenda.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Reports item 3A, Community Choice Aggregation Presentation and Recommended Action. A blue memo or staff memorandum has been provided regarding this item correcting the recommendation to authorize staff to initiate feasibility study and to dispense with bidding procedures and solicit proposals.
Thank you. Mr. Helen?
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council members. I want to provide just a very brief intro before we have our subject matter experts come up and provide us a larger overview this afternoon. So, in a short introduction, a community choice aggregation, or often called community choice energy, is a way for local governments to procure certain energy supply on an energy market to allow those benefits to be brought to the locality, whether it's the city businesses that want to do that. This isn't taking over power. This is allowing PG&E to be the power provider. They handle the service lines, the transmission lines. This isn't a sort of municipalizing power, but it allows a CCA that's established to work under that umbrella and to bring alternative forms of power to the area. Three key points that local agencies look at through this process, and really, these are like drivers of why local governments would look at this. One is to give residents an additional choice. Additional choices allow for more competition. So, more competition is always a good thing and potentially could save people money. Also, it's an option to add to a city's toolkit. It's economic development driver where you could carve out some additional enterprise funds to invest in either economic development programs, either targeted areas, or any additional ways to incentivize or bring things to your community that you didn't have. And third is this is an innovative concept. One of the city council goals is to look for innovative and ways that we can establish ourselves in industry sectors. So, this is definitely an innovative concept. Mr. Hastings, who I'll introduce in just a minute, can share with us how this has been used in other communities, what's been the benefits, and what's some of the overall goals that a CCA can provide. And I think as a side benefit, definitely local control. That's something that entities that have looked at CCAs allows them to have that way to invest in energy projects or investments where they wouldn't otherwise have. So, with that, I'm going to introduce Mr. Woody Hastings. He's an energy policy analyst. He's got 30 years of experience in this sector. He's also got with him Rob England, his associate. They'll go through the main presentation. We'll be available to answer any questions. Mr. Hastings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Helen. Good afternoon, Mayor Go and council members. My name is Woody Hastings, and I'm with the Climate Center. So, just a little bit more, just by way of introduction, myself, I, as Mr. Helen said, I've got over 30 years of experience in energy and environmental policy. And so, the Climate Center is a nonprofit statewide climate and energy policy organization. I think it's important to say at the outset, we, the Climate Center, has no commercial interest in community choice or your pursuit of community choice energy. We're independently funded. And so, why the Climate Center? Why are we giving a presentation on community choice energy, a policy that is only available to cities and counties in California, local governments? Well, the Climate Center identified community choice roughly in the mid-2000s, 2005, as a fantastic opportunity for cities, counties to take control of part of the energy, electricity service system, the procurement of the power, not the delivery, as Mr. Helen said, not the poles and the wires, but where does the energy come from, who's procuring it on behalf of the residents? That's the piece that community choice does. I was hired in 2010 by the Climate Center, based on my past experience, to help lead the effort to form what became the second community choice aggregation in the state of California, Sonoma Clean Power, located in Sonoma County. As we were completing that effort between 2010 and 2014, we embarked on a campaign to sort of share the experience that we had in Sonoma County, in other areas. And so, we were very instrumental in helping the city of San Jose launch their program and other Silicon Valley cities launch their programs. And in fact, all around the state to today, where we've got about 26 operational community choice agencies in the state comprised of over 200 cities, because a lot of them are joint powers authorities, and about close to half the counties in the state. So, that's just all sort of introductory. Hopefully, this will work. It's working great. Yay. So, what is it? Again, we'll just say that it's, in a nutshell, a local program that buys and does have statutory authority to generate its own power, meaning, hey, you can build your own power plants if you want. And it provides electricity for businesses and residents. And by the way, you can also provide service to your own municipal accounts, the power that the city of Bakersfield itself needs to purchase. It was enabled by state law, so this is something that was only enabled by the legislature in 2002. After the 2000, 2001 debacle, there was an effort to rescue a key piece of what the promise had been of that effort at deregulation, which was choice. So, in this way, cities are able to offer their consumers a choice, not the full choice, because your incumbent utility, in your case, PG&E, is still managing, owning, operating the poles and the wires, but the procurement of the power, the sources of the electricity, is in the hands of the local government. And it partners with the incumbent utility. The 26 CCAs around the state on a daily basis work with their partner investor in utilities, PG&E, SoCal Edison, San Diego Gas and Electric, on the management of the electricity system, on programs that they offer to the customers, and more. And it is the default service in its territory. It's sort of like a municipal program, like water, waste management services, energy, electricity service. It's a default service because community choice agencies are not-for-profit, they're locally based, led by accountable elected officials. And so, what that really means when we say default is that when, if, it's only initiated by a vote of the city council. So, after the whole process goes through, you decide, yes, we want to do this. The feasibility study says it's got some benefits for the city of Bakersfield. A vote of the city council would stand up the CCA. When it launches, everybody's, the customers are automatically enrolled. So, that means it's the default in the service territory. Folks can opt out. They can be what we call a bundled customer with PG&E, getting their procurement and poles and wire delivery service from the original utility. But customers are automatically enrolled and have that new choice where they can opt out, stay with PG&E, or be with the Bakersfield Energy Choice Program, or whatever it's called. So, this is just a little diagram depiction to try to further illustrate what this is, how it works. So, the CCA, Community Choice Aggregation, is all about the sources of power. Is it coal, you know, nuclear, hydropower, or is it solar, wind, geothermal, a wide variety of energy sources that are on the energy market that your CCA can procure for your constituents. And then, the utility remains the delivery service. And the customers are the residents, businesses, and your own municipal services in your jurisdiction. If the city of Bakersfield did this alone, it would be your city boundaries, city limits. That's the service territory of the community choice agency. So, again, 25, roughly 25 CCAs in the state, over 200 cities, 20 counties, and hundreds of elected officials. And by the way, we can put you in touch, if you'd like, with your peer elected officials in other cities where this has been up and running for a while, folks, elected officials that have been involved in going through the process of standing it up and then watching it, you know, flower. And so, I'm happy to do that. It's been a good experience for a lot of elected officials in the state of California. There is a statewide California Community Choice Association. And so, this map, it's really hard to see what it's showing there, but it's showing the service territories of the existing community choice agencies. Pretty much all the populations, most of the population centers in the state have adopted it along the coast, as you can see, but Placer County and, I think Butte County up there in the sort of northeast part are also operational community choice agencies. And so, again, it's happening in California and continuing to expand. This is a map that's showing, showing where a lot of the new procured renewable, RPS stands for Renewable Portfolio Standard. That's the state's way of measuring new renewables that are fed into the grid. The state has the standards for how much renewable solar, wind, geothermal, small hydropower is used in the state. And this shows a lot of those projects throughout the state. And you'll see that a number of them are in the Central Valley. We would assert that the Central Valley, the only places, Rob will talk about this in a moment, there are only a handful of places in the Central Valley where there's actually community choice aggregation. We think Bakersfield and other jurisdictions in the Central Valley should stand up their own community choice agency so that they can reap the full benefits of these projects that are going in in the Central Valley, because right now, that power is getting wheeled out to other areas. So, that power should be of by and for the Central Valley, in our view. And so, this is another slide that you can't really see too well, but each one of those is a little, this is a mock-up of a webpage. These are the programs that community choice agencies are able to stand up with the revenues that they receive. And Rob will talk in a moment about those revenues, because how is this funded? You're probably puzzling, you know, how do we do this? Well, there's an existing revenue stream that the city, that it's the money that people are already paying on their bills currently to PG&E that takes a big U-turn when you launch your CCA, goes into the control of the local government. And the CCAs to date have been structuring those revenues to be able to have operational funds, rainy day funds, reserve funds, and program funds to stand up programs to meet the needs of the community. And so, some local program highlights, they just started up this page that just sort of takes out a few of those programs. And so, there's programs in workforce development, on what's called on-bill financing programs, where there's a 0% interest way to pay for energy efficiency and renewable energy upgrades, electric school buses, you know, the CCAs are expanding, able to do programs in clean emission vehicle expansion, all-electric affordable housing, community benefits grants, a wide variety of programs. In my own neck of the woods, when the wildfires hit in 2017, our CCA was already up and running, they were quickly able to pivot and stand up a program to help folks rebuild their homes that were destroyed in the wildfire with incentives up to $17,500 to build more efficient with solar, with storage. And so, that was a very popular program. And by the way, it was in a collaboration with PG&E and our air quality control district in that area. So, it was sort of a joint project program to help those folks that had been burned out from those wildfires. So, that's a story in our own community. And again, this is the real compelling piece of this, and why have all these cities gone to the effort? And why would Bakersfield go to the effort of standing one of these up? It's because there's an existing revenue stream. And I'll hand it off to Rob, Rob, here's the little clicker, to talk a little bit more about this and a few other things. But thank you very much. I look forward to answering whatever questions you might have for us. Thanks.
Thank you, Woody. Mayor Go, council. What you are looking at on your screen right now is an estimate of how much revenue is currently leaving our community and going into the existing power company that could be redirected to local control. And some of those programs that Woody just mentioned could absolutely be possible, but not in its current state with a CCA. It could happen, though. So, here are some benefits of having a CCA, and one that we didn't list is actually my personal favorite, which is choice. It gives our community members choice. If they want to be on the CCA, they can. They want to stick with their current power setup that they have, they can. Also gives the council choice, council choice to adopt programs that best serve your constituencies. You all represent very different areas with different economic needs, and I think this would provide really good flexibility to be able to handle some of those issues. Here are some existing CCAs that are in the valley. As you can see, there's, out of 25, there's not many, but Los Banos, Stockton, and Tracy also all have CCAs currently active. Now, this slide talks about your governance models. What we have been discussing most today is a single jurisdiction, where the city of Bakersfield, city council is the governing body of the CCA. It does give you all the greatest degree of autonomy, but you would bear all the startup costs for the CCA. It's about a two-year timeframe minimum for these to get off the ground. Now, another option, and what some of your other Central Valley communities have done is they've joined into a joint power authority. So, less autonomy, because now you're sharing governance with other communities, other elected officials. But you do get shared startup costs, so the initial investment is less. You do have a longer timeframe, so you'll want to tack on at least another one to maybe even three years, if you're looking to do that option, on top of the two that it's going to take for a single jurisdiction. You could join an existing CCA, Joint Power Authority, which is the easiest, very little cost, if any. Again, your decision-making power will be diluted. The option of full municipalization, it is an option, but it's, you know, not measured necessarily in a timeframe of years, more like decades, legal battles potentially, and you're now looking at multimillion dollars to get started up on that. So, you know, definitely, I would take that information as a kind of a cautious route to do that. Now, as we mentioned, each of these steps that we take to get towards a CCA, it's about a few months totaling up to about two and a half years. Again, if we're going to be looking at doing, you know, a joint powers authority, it could tack on another one to three years. And some of the best practices for the CCA feasibility studies, we recommend, you know, doing a deep dive into utility-provided data, energy trends, and other information that you have at your disposal. Contains statistically sound and vetted modeling, including random variable sampling. As Woody mentioned, we have other live examples that we could provide you all with, whether that's connecting with fellow electeds or providing you all with data. Being transparent and neutral and performed by experts with experience in energy modeling and analysis. Definitely want to, when you look into a consultant for that, you want to make sure you're getting somebody that has done this before. We're not going to play this video now. It's 12 minutes, but if you do get a chance, this was a video put on by CCA California. It's a brief history on how CCAs got started in the state. Finally, here's our contact information, if you want to reach out for any other information that you need. Now, we're in touch with Gary, but y'all can feel free to reach us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. England. Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Mr. Helen, any comments before we go to council?
No, we're ready to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's been about three years since I heard about this and started discussing it with staff and wanted to find out more, but I definitely think that it's worth looking at. I think there's a lot of opportunity for the city of Bakersfield. We, Kern County is the energy capital of California, and I think that our past and our future has a lot to do with energy. And so, we should be out front and on the cutting edge for that type of stuff. We can generate our own power, we can buy power from other people, we can save our constituents money in the long run. And I think it's also a great workforce development opportunity, and it's a great local control opportunity. So, I'm excited, and yes, I'd like to move forward. Anxious to hear other comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for coming today to share this with us. Just a couple of real quick questions. As far as percentage of savings when our residents or businesses opt in, what are you looking out for savings? Because I know PG&E's going up many percents a year now.
Right. And so, on the, this, and so, the savings that you're able to provide to your customers, they would be customers, is only on the, what we call the generation side of the bill, not the transmission and distribution side. So, it's only, you know, it's roughly 40-ish percent of the bill. And so, that's where you can provide some savings, and it's in the single digits. And it's a function of, you know, you will have multiple goals. So, if a goal of the Bakersfield Community Choice Agency is to provide a significant discount off the investor in utility rate, that can be a high priority. So, in this existing CCAs, the ones that have emphasized that are in the roughly 6% to 9% less than the incumbent utility. Others that have prioritized more programs for their constituents, or say, more, you know, innovative programs that cost money, or more renewables, higher greenhouse gas-free or renewable power, those are more either at par with or just like 2%, 3% discount off the incumbent utility rate. So, not a huge amount. That's, we haven't talked about that so much, because it's not really the big selling point. I think a bigger selling point is the capacity building, the workforce, the ability to offer programs, the customer choice, those kinds of things. Over time, because part of the reason why it's so small, it would be much larger, but there is an exit fee that community choice agencies have to pay to the incumbent utility to ensure that the remaining bundled customers, all the rest of the folks that are not in a community choice aggregation, pay for the cost of the power that had been procured on behalf of the folks that are currently paying the bills in Bakersfield. So, there's this exit fee, and as long, you know, that takes time to be paid off. Once that's paid off, the delta increases, it just takes a long time.
So, for a city our size, for a single jurisdiction where we'd have total control, what are we looking at as far as an investment for the city? I mean, to average, I know you can't tell us, because you haven't done the study yet.
Yeah, there's different phases. No, but I can tell you that it's, so, the biggest chunk that you're going to need is that it's a bridge loan, basically. And I would guess for Bakersfield, it's going to be something on the order of $15 million, which is for that, that amount that you're going to need to procure the power prior to any customers paying any bills. And so, that's a brief loan. The other loans have to do with other startup costs, you know, hiring. You want to hire folks. This is a key piece of the recipe for a successful community choice agency, is hiring people with experience. You don't want to just try to do this from the seat of your pants. You hire folks from the industry to stand up your community choice agency as an enterprise. And so, there's those startup costs in the lower, you know, 2 to 5 to $7 million, and then that chunk of money that you need for that bridge loan. I can tell you this, that of the 26 CCAs that have launched, they have all, because of that revenue stream, high confidence that that gets paid, people pay their utility bills, that revenue stream kicks in, they've all paid off their startup costs within, you know, two to three years.
So, initially, I mean, initially, there's money out, but eventually, it will be, will it be a profitable thing, or just for the city, or?
Well, as I said, since it's a not-for-profit entity, the revenues can be structured that, yes, there is, there are dollars there that can be used to build up reserve funds, operational funds, rainy day funds, program funds, structured, and a discount, small discount. Now, you can do fewer of those fund buildups of smaller program fund, or take longer to build up your program fund, and offer a higher discount from the get-go to your customers. That's a choice. Those are the kinds of choices that the council would have in terms of what are the priorities for Bakersfield. Do we, you know, is the priority to reduce those customer bill costs, and that might well be your priority, or is it to advance some kind of customer-facing program, you know, cooling centers? That's one of the things that gets talked about a lot, for example, in some of the other cities, Los Banos and Stockton, where, you know, in the Central Valley, when it gets real hot in the summertime coming up, you know, being able to stand up cooling centers, working with PG&E to stand up programs like that.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Freeman?
Yeah, I just had a few questions regarding the approximate $15 million of startup cost. Is it the same whether we join up with another one in some sort of joint powers, one that's already existing, and just join up with them, as opposed to doing one our own, or would it still be $15 million, or would that drop down to five? What would happen if we joined an existing one?
Yeah, it would be dramatically different. It's far, there's far less, far less work that the city of Bakersfield would need to do, and there's far lower cost if you're simply going to join an existing community choice agency. I mean, you'd have to start with one that's interested in having a new member jurisdiction, and there are 25 to use from, so, but they're not all wanting to expand. But, so, it'd be much lower, and in fact, next to nothing in a lot of cases, because they're interested.
And does it matter where that other one is located? I mean?
They don't need to be contiguous.
So, they don't need to be in Fresno versus San Diego, wouldn't make any difference?
You know, here's the thing, is that there's no legal requirement that they be in close proximity, or contiguous, or anything like that. But there is the word "community" in there, and so, what does that actually mean? And so, you know, I think that you'd want to at least try to find an agency that's somewhat, somewhat close. Lancaster, California in the south, actually operates something called, we call it a hybrid JPA, and they have a number of different cities that have joined, and Bakersfield could look into that Joint Powers Authority. And Lancaster is not that far away, sort of has some of the same dynamics and...
Few other questions. This is just the, the purchase of the power, I guess, the billing, but the actual physical transmission lines are still maintained by PG&E?
That's right.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear. What happens to the people who have signed up on solar contracts, you know, it's spreading, and I think the contract is with PG&E, they'll buy your power at 30 cents a kilowatt hour. Do those people just stay with their PG and N contract? They're kind of unaffected by this?
Yeah, that's a very good question, and that's one that we get quite frequently. Yeah, that's a very good question, and that's one that we get quite frequently. And so, the solar customers would retain that arrangement that they have with Pacific Gas and Electric for that net energy metering, it's called net energy metering, or NEM, arrangement with PG&E. When the community choice agency comes into play, there's a separate net energy metering arrangement with the community choice agency, and a lot of the CCAs have chosen to offer an even more generous payback, or, you know, compensation for clean power that's fed to the grid from that solar. So there's, so they stay, and they have two different...
Okay. There'd be people who already signed up with PG&E, you're saying they could actually opt out and go with the new power agency, or just the new people who signed up would have a choice?
Not much changes for them. They stay, they stay, they're, the solar customers' arrangement with PG&E doesn't change.
Okay. But if it's a new customer, now, you know, the day after you implement this, someone wants to put in a solar system, would this new power authority be a competitor to PG&E offering, hey, we'll buy your energy, you know, we can do as good a job, or cheaper, or would it still just, people do their solar with PG&E?
Solar is just one of many considerations for any customer to look at in terms of whether or not they want to opt out of the community choice agency and remain a bundled customer with Pacific Gas and Electric. So the solar component isn't sort of a thing that they need to make much of a, they don't need to make a separate decision on that. They will get a deal, and when a CCA launches, if they do nothing, there's a, it's just the sort of existing, it mirrors what the arrangement is with PG&E. The community choice agency has the authority to modify that. They could make it worse. None of them have made it worse.
Okay, and a final question. Where is the largest savings, why you can deliver your power? It's a 3% to 9% savings off 40%, not off 100%.
That's right, that's absolutely right, yes.
So, you know, that makes it smaller. Is it because just you don't have the overhead they have? Is it PG just got a giant overhead that nobody can really deal with? Where, let's say the net savings, sounds like it's more like, you know, 4% to 5%, because if you're looking at, of 100%. And I'm just wondering, is it just because they have a big overhead that, you know, you don't, you don't, aren't burdened with?
I mean, there are, yeah, shareholders and a lot of, you know, other expenses and obligations. It is two different parts of the system, though. One of them is, you know, the pulls and the wires, huge infrastructure, transmission system, that kind of thing, and the procurement side of it, the generation side, is a much different sort of dynamic with a lot of third-party energy project developers, and that's where, you know, you go out to...
Yeah, you're just saying they have, you know, they have more costs than you have.
They have more costs.
You couldn't deliver it cheaper if they didn't.
And they are a for-profit, so they have shareholder dividends to look out for, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you for your presentation today. Just have a few questions in agreement with Councilmember Smith. You know, we are really the energy capital here in California, so it's good to learn about ways in which we can perhaps diversify. My first question is, where all has the Climate Center worked, in which cities, to help start the CCAs?
So our work at the Climate Center, we started, we were originally, our office, prior to COVID, we had an office in Santa Rosa, so we initiated the effort in Sonoma County that now encompasses Sonoma and Mendocino County, and then we worked very closely with the city of San Jose on their effort, and other Silicon Valley cities, and Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and Peninsula Clean Energy, and San Mateo County. We worked a lot with the folks in Alameda County to stand up East Bay Community Energy. San Francisco has, San Francisco Clean Energy. So, you know, and then really, all around the state, we did a lot of work, and we began our work in the Central Valley in 2016, so we worked with Stockton, and Stockton has, you know, is now on track to launch service through East Bay Community Energy. And in Fresno, it's still an ongoing effort, so looking at that. But we've, you know, we've worked with a lot of cities throughout the state, and with a lot of the community choice agencies that have started out, actually all the way down to San Diego, I've done some presentations down in San Diego County as well.
Okay, so throughout the process, I'm assuming you, you all are hands-on in cooperating that CCA, or is it just more so creating a framework?
Great, great question. What we're doing right now is, the biggest part of the Climate Center's role is to sort of get the early sharing of information and understanding. We don't do feasibility studies, we don't help operate the community choice agency, we don't do that kind of thing. We look at this as a policy that we like to see cities and counties take on. Of course, for the Climate Center, why? Because you have the ability to choose more solar, more wind, and that's good for the climate. You have other choices to make. I mean, a CCA could build a coal-fired plant if it wanted to, there's no statutory requirement against that. Climate Center wouldn't want to see Bakersfield build a coal plant, but the point there is that you have choices to make. In our area, the choice is to really push the envelope on more clean energy, renewables, and the jobs that that creates.
Okay, so the cities you've listed on the map that included the cities in the Central Valley, I'm curious as to who, were you all the one, you know, you presented on the CCA, or who worked with those cities to bring forward a CCA, or bring it together?
Well, Stockton is the one that where we invested the most time and effort since 2016, working with city council members there and the mayors over time. So Stockton, I would point to, is the one where we did the most. We had sort of a peripheral role in Los Banos and Tracy.
Okay. And as summer approaches, I'm obviously thinking about the hot, very hot days that we experience here in Bakersfield, how does an existing CCA buy enough power to cover customers with really high electricity load days, like the consecutive hot summer days we see here in Bakersfield? I'm sure maybe the other cities don't see days as hot, maybe they do, but how do existing CCAs achieve that, and how can we also make sure that that's a priority within the feasibility study when conducted?
Right, that's, yeah, I mean, and that is a hard and fast requirement, that there are strict rules around procuring enough electricity. It's called resource adequacy in the state, and it's actually the reason why, if you look back at that timeline, there's this wonky, obscure CPUC E4907, which is an automatic 12-month hold. And that 12-month hold, what's the point of that? That's to ensure that the community choice agency is procuring enough power precisely for what you just talked about. It's got to be 15% above the peak load in your area, and so there are strict requirements. And again, the key to being able to navigate all this is hire, when you launch your CCA, hire people with procurement officers that know about energy scheduling, that know how to procure power, know how to procure enough, and enough of the right kinds, and not have yourself in a situation where you have to purchase what's called spot power, which is the highest-cost power, where, you know, you realize that, you know, it's hotter than you thought it was going to be, and you all of a sudden need to buy a lot of power on a very short notice, and that's very expensive, and you don't want to do that.
Agreed. So, maybe this is a question also for city staff. If the Climate Center, you do not conduct feasibility studies, so who will be conducting the feasibility study for us?
So, yeah, we would go out and hire a third party to not only do the feasibility study, but the startup and implementation. As Mr. Hastings said, this is a very complicated market, the energy market, we would want experts in that field doing this for us.
Agreed. So we will now be beginning the process to go seek out...
This first step is just the feasibility study.
Okay.
And then we would bring back a separate action, if the feasibility study results in positive results, to say, okay, now we can move to the next step.
So we do not have the third-party consultant yet? Okay, got it. Thank you so much. Thank you for the responses.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you go back to second slide, maybe?
That one?
Not that one, no. Keep going, keep going. Where's the, okay, where's the first slide? Because...
The first slide was this one, where it makes the very nice sound every time.
Okay, I thought there was a slide in there that showed $125 million.
Yeah, 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 I can get to that one. And that's a rough estimate based on the population, you don't want to, you really don't want to base it on the population, that's a back-of-the-envelope guesstimate, of the existing revenue stream, that is the amount of money that folks pay on their bill, not the entire bill, but that 40% of the bill that currently leaves Bakersfield. And that is the revenue stream that would take a big U-turn. When you launch your community choice agency, that money comes into local control. That's the big shazam about community choice, and why you look at the financials of community choice agencies just three years after they've launched, and they've got tens and tens of millions of dollars, depending on the size, in their accounts. It's because these are enormous amounts of money that are currently, you know, going to PG&E to procure that power. The legislature in 2002 deemed, you know, you've got a natural monopoly on the transmission and distribution. You don't want poles and wires crisscrossing from different companies competing to do transmission and distribution, but the procurement side of the puzzle, just procuring that power, that's something that can be opened up to the competitive private, you know, mark, to the market. And so, that's the part of electricity service, and that's the part where 125, roughly 125 million, somewhere between that, and I think probably close to 150 million, maybe, I was trying to be conservative there. And yes, the feasibility study will give you, that's the kind of data you want, you want to know what's your load, what's the power mix you might be able to provide, what's that revenue stream, that kind of thing, and that would become the, what you'd want to have in that feasibility study.
Okay, so, it's $125 million a year that's going to come into, if we did it here in Bakersfield, that's going to come into our city?
That's right. That would come into your enterprise fund to pay for the people that you've hired to run it, to pay off the startup costs, to pay to feed into your funds that you're going to want to build up over time, to do programs, or, you know, reserve funds, what have you. And so that all sorts, we've seen it now, 23 times, where it happens on a fairly quick basis, and you're able to do things with your CCA fairly early, in the early years.
Okay, so, our gross income is 125 million, let's say.
And let's not get too focused on...
No, I'm not, I'm not pegged into that. Okay, it's 125 million, so we're going to have to hire experts in just about everything they do, and we've got to have a number of things go on there, so, I mean, what chunk does that take out of that 125?
Oh, it's a very small percentage of the, most of that money goes to procure the power that's needed. So, most of that money is gone to the purchase on the energy market for the power. And then, you know, all of the salaries, that's a very miniscule piece of the 125 million, and the funds I was talking about, very, very small a part of that.
Okay, so what would you just, off the top of your head, guesstimate that what would be left for distributions to customers and cost savings to the customers?
I'm not clear on the question.
Okay, we have minimal salaries and overhead expenses and procurement of the power is, I assume, a giant cost.
Yes.
Okay, and so, after we pay all those bills, what kind of money are we have, do we have 10 million left to go to the customers here?
I would just, I would just, I would just go on what we see with the operation, the existing CCAs, and I would put it in terms of what kind of a rate discount are they able to provide to their customers? So it's everything from like, nothing, you know, at par with the incumbent rate, and it's, I'm, it gets a little complicated. So there's, most CCAs offer their customers a couple of options. A basic service, and that can be at par with the incumbent utility, or with a discount, and so it's, you know, 2-ish, 3%, if you really want to emphasize that discount. The best one, I think Placer County and the Lancaster hybrid JPA discounts are in the 5% to 9% off of the, off of the incumbent utility generation rate. But then, the choices that are offered, so a number of the CCAs offer, well, if you want to really do more for the environment, you can get, pay a little bit more for 100% renewable energy, and some of them have 100% greenhouse gas-free, and there's a difference, but it gets, again, it's sort of into the weeds, but there's a difference between greenhouse gas-free energy and renewable energy.
I'm just trying to get a general idea, after we pay all the expenses, how much savings would we be able to pass out to our customers? Is it 3%?
It's between, I would say it's between 2% and 9%, something in that range, not more than 10%.
Of the 125 million dollars?
Of the revenue stream that comes in, I think that when you structure that CCA structure, that your program, your program, what your power mix is going to be that you're going to procure, how much you want to put into your reserve funds and program funds and all that, I think you would still, because I've seen it happen with so many CCAs, you'd still be able to have a rate discount somewhere between 2% and 9%.
Okay, well, I think you've answered my question. I just, I just want to clarify that, if there's anybody watching this out there, that, you know, we're not getting 125 million dollars that we can spread out to our consumers. We're getting about 3% of that to spread out to, and I'm not criticizing the plan or any of that, I just wanted to know how much we have left to send out to our consumers.
Yeah, it's a good question, and those, that kind of question's a very good question, and that's the kind of thing, you get that kind of, you'll get way better detail than you'll get from me here today on that, from the consultant that'll do the feasibility study. And there are a number of them in the state now that have quite a bit of experience in doing these feasibility studies, and so there's a lot of confidence that, you know, that they can give you the kind of information that you'll need, data that you'll need to make an informed decision about whether to hit the green light or not.
Okay, well, we're not going to force you to swear and sign a document for us here tonight, it's just general information, and I think it was very good information. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. We've asked a lot of questions tonight, but my question specifically is, how do we get to the 125 million dollars that will come back into our community? Are we going to be able to leverage, like, you know, it's been said on this dais tonight, that we produce a tremendous amount of energy, and we have an incredibly diverse portfolio here in Kern County, are we going to be able to leverage a lot of those projects that have already been established?
You probably will be. I mean, how you leverage that revenue stream is with a vote. So, you know, if the feasibility study is favorable, and everything else looks right, and you've had plenty of sort of engagement and input from the community, and there's a decision leading toward, you know, actually voting, you know, you vote to do this, you know, it's in the state statute that you have the authority to do that, and so you would be able to launch your CCA, and, and I'm sorry, the actual question that you asked?
Yeah.
Oh, the existing, the existing, so yes, there's a mixed bag of sort of legacy or existing projects that you can procure from, be it geothermal, or hydro, or solar or wind, they're already there, but contracts for that power are for discrete amounts of time, so they come, they conclude. And so, you will have some projects that already exist, that all of a sudden, they put that power out onto the market, they say, hey, we have a contract with so-and-so expiring, we're open to new bidders for that power in 2025, have at it. And so you would be able to procure that power from an existing wind farm, or solar farm, or what have you. Also, as we saw in the one slide here, which is, to a lot of folks that follow this stuff, really compelling, this is 11 gigawatts of power. Come on, there it is. 11 gigawatts, I didn't really emphasize that. What's 11 gigawatts? This is new renewable energy that community choice agencies have been responsible for starting in the state of California. for starting in the state of California. 11 gigawatts is about nine-ish Diablo Canyon nuclear power plants? It's a lot of power. It's a significant amount of power. And so, you know, you can stand up. You can be responsible for, and these are third-party developers. You go out to the market, you say you want X, Y, and Z power. You want a wind farm, you want a solar farm. In Kern County, you want it to be workers here benefiting, community benefiting, all of that stuff. And so you can receive all the benefits. Why? Because you've stood up a CCA and you're actually also receiving the power at a rate that you've set. You set the rates. We didn't really talk about that either. The CCA sets its own rates without a stamp of approval from CPUC. You have the authority to set those rates. And you have the authority to develop programs and to build your own, you know, procure your own power, be responsible for initiating projects like this 11 gigawatts of renewables in the state.
Thank you. So, from what I've heard tonight, it sounds like there's a lot of decisions and research that need to be made and work that needs to go into developing these partners, partnerships, excuse me, with our workforce and labor partners. Can you talk to me a little bit about the staffing? What is going to be required to manage and uplift or stand up this particular project?
Yeah, I mean, the first few staff members that you need to hire, you know, a CEO that has depth of experience, years of experience in energy or utilities procurement. You want to hire a procurement officer, data analyst, things like that. So, there's about a half a dozen employees at the startup that you'd want to have. It doesn't take a huge bureaucracy. You know, the first one, they started out, they had four employees for a very long time. Centum Clean Power, where we were a very small handful of employees for the whole first year. Over time, they build up their staff, build up the capacity, that kind of thing. But it's, again, it's a function of not giving yourself a headache. If it's a single jurisdiction CCA and Bakersfield has its own community choice agency, you'd be the governing board, but you don't need to become energy wonks and understand everything there is about procuring, you know, energy and scheduling and all of that stuff. It's a policy direction that you would provide to the staff about how much of a bill savings you want to provide, how much renewables need to be in the mix, what kind of choices you want to offer to customers in terms of like a premium product or a basic product. Some of them have three, that kind of thing. Some of them have programs where you're directly paying for a specific solar project. So, there's a variety of things that can be, that can happen.
Okay, great. I think this is a great idea on paper. I think it's a huge benefit to the community. It gives us a lot more local control. I think, though, it's coming at a tough time. You know, we just have had multiple budget presentations talking about a multimillion-dollar deficit in our general fund and increasing costs associated with the general fund that frankly are almost out of our control. And so it makes me a little hesitant to pull the trigger right in this moment as we look into the depths of, you know, potentially an economic recession. But I think it would be good for us to at least do a little bit more homework and research and see if there's an opportunity here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. That's Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. Back to that 125 million dollar slide. That is an assumption if all existing customers participate in a CCA. Is that correct? What is the assumption of participation?
That, that revenue stream is, you know, roughly, that's what the existing revenue stream is that's leaving Bakersfield, right? And you're correct that there would be some percentage in the CCAs that are operational. The range is from just 1% or 2% opt-out in the best cases to, I think, about 20% of the customers having, saying no thank you to the CCA. So, 20% is the max in the state right now, if I'm recalling correctly. And then the feasibility study can answer that question specifically. Can answer all these questions with more specificity. But anyway, so yes, like if you get a high opt-out rate in Bakersfield and it's something like 25%, that number does change. That's your revenue stream going down.
Mm-hmm. And I understand that, you know, it's hard to determine what this cost savings actually will be for the customer, the ratepayer, given the fact that we haven't really conducted the feasibility study. But also, we haven't really clarified really what our objectives are as a council, right? Is it to reduce fees, reduce rates for customers? Or is it to, you know, add additional community benefits?
Yeah, and that's a discussion you should have. And I can tell you that, from experience, that by the time you get to the point, you know, after the feasibility study will tell you, at least within a much better ballpark range, of what kind of a discount you'll be able to provide to your customers. And as the date approaches, there's several off-ramps. You can, you can, you know, pull back on it. I mean, you know, any money you've invested in it would not be recoverable from the revenue stream that would come if you decide not to launch. But as you get closer, you can have more specificity to the customers about what kind of, and certainly at the launch point, you would be able to tell them exactly what their bill savings would be.
And to speak to my colleagues concerned, Councilmember Arias, what is the general ballpark amount for a feasibility study? How much does that cost?
You know, since so many of them have been done these days for a city the size of Bakers, one part of how to answer this is it depends how much you ask them to do in the feasibility study. So, for a basic feasibility study for a single jurisdiction, somewhere around $50,000 is in the ballpark. And, but if you want more and if it's a JPA with multiple jurisdictions, it costs more. But then if you're going to look at JPA type of thing, you'd be sharing costs. So, it's a moving target, but roughly 50, maybe 60,000.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other requests. Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Freeman.
Just kind of wrap up. It seems to me that, and I guess if we spent the money on a feasibility study, we'd find this out and talk to some of the major cities. How's it going? You know, what do you see as the benefits? Because I don't, I mean, we talk, you use a lot of numbers, but I don't see much of a savings here. I mean, even if 80% of your people, and we're talking about 40% of the revenue, and it saves, before he said 6% or 9%, so I use seven and a half. And I said, times, 40%, that's 3%. So, we might have a 3% lower utility bill. I don't see that as the, if one opted to do it, I don't think he would do it to save 3%. It seems to me that we would do it for local control. I just don't see, I think, we're not having 125 million coming in here. Even if 80% of 100 million came in, well, that's going to buy, our overhead would be a handful of employees. The money is going to buy power because we're out there competing. And the better deals we make, we can pass on more savings or have funds. Like you said, we can build up reserve funds. Those are sort of potentials, but you can't guarantee them. So, it seems to me, and that's why we'd have to get bids on feasibility studies, you know, scopes and bids, but I'd also ask staff to take the three biggest cities and go talk to them who are doing it and say, what's your experience? At this point, what would you say the benefit was? Are you glad you did this? Because I don't, and maybe they'll, your numbers, I know you have to be conservative when you're speaking to us, so your numbers aren't, you know, 3%. That's not a big deal. And we didn't get very little investment in the local community when I look at the numbers. It's more, what are the other benefits and what would these other jurisdictions tell us? I would really be interested in having that information brought to us where someone on our staff talked to them. Maybe you can give the recommendation. Whenever you brought it back with, here's three estimates of the cost of feasibility studies. At the same time, we could have feedback from other jurisdictions. Just, you know, that's the real life stuff. You'd really like to hear from the people who are really doing it to feel comfortable that, you know, you got the most information you could. So, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yes, I would like to move forward. Does staff have a number on the feasibility study?
We actually have a couple firms that we've already talked to. So, we can quickly get, and because we're asking to dispense standard billing or bidding, we can get what Councilmember Freeman's asking, you know, get some dollars back. We actually have a firm that said they will do it for free. So, we can have no cost, which there's no money out.
And then you're locked into them if it goes further?
No, we can structure it where if we decide to own that feasibility study, then we would need to pay for it, but there is an opportunity for it to be free, even if we don't use them on the ongoing side.
Okay, well, I'm still very positive about it. I know that it's not a big savings to individual customers, but the opportunity for workforce development, the opportunity to turn more dollars locally to buy from local energy providers, I think, is what makes it exciting to me. And the opportunity to push energy technology in Bakersfield. So, I will make the motion to authorize staff to initiate a feasibility study. And I guess I can put it all in one motion and dispense with standard bidding procedures.
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes. Councilmember Freeman.
To do the feasibility and spend the 50,000 or whatever. To come back and say, here's our, that's what I'm trying to understand. What's the motion?
The motion is to do the feasibility study, to hire the consultant. They've got a couple already. And so, yes, that is the motion, to do the feasibility study.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes. We're not seeing... Madam Clerk, do we need to take some other action?
Motion is approved with Councilmember Freeman voting no.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Reports item 3B, Public Safety Update, Police Department Calls For Service, Priorities, and Response Times.
Thank you, Mr. England, Mr. Hastings. Chief Terry.
Did you videotape your last presentation? Chief, did you videotape your last presentation on Monday?
I should have. Some of it will be very familiar. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of this information. I'll try to move pretty quickly here through the presentation so we can have some good dialogue, I'm sure. But what I intend to show you is really what happens in the life of a call. When someone calls the police department for service, kind of what transpires internally within the police department, how it is handled, how priorities are signed, what some of, what our priorities are, how they're defined. And then we'll talk a little bit about some of the call-answer times within the communication center and then some response time information as well. So, here, when someone calls 911 or the non-emergency line, this is an example of some of the information that we get. A call is assigned, an actual call number is assigned. Obviously, the date and time of the request for service is marked. And then we begin obtaining information from the caller. Based on the information that the caller is providing us at that moment and the type of crime or emergency that's being reported, a priority is assigned. It's either 1 through a 9. And those are some general categories of what some of the different priorities are. Then the call is assigned to an officer. And these are important times that we capture and use in our data and statistics with regard to response times and call-for-service times. The dispatchers use some of these definitions in, or we use these definitions, and so do the dispatchers in the course of their call. And when they're triaging a call, so an in-progress call would be something occurring at the time that the caller is on the phone with them. If the caller provides that it occurred more than 20 minutes ago or within that previous 20 minutes, then it is, triage basically has just occurred. So, the dispatchers handle it that way. If it is a report call generally, if it occurred more than 20 minutes. So, those are some of the categories and very specific timelines that the dispatchers use in the triaging of their call. We have nine different priorities. A priority one obviously is the highest emergency. These are death or serious injury, imminently life-threatening incidents, or information that's being obtained. A priority two is very similar to that. One of the distinctions is, would be that the suspect or the person who's responsible is no longer there, or that life-threatening emergency or the imminent life-threatening matter is no longer the case. However, it's still a very serious incident. Here very quickly is just some data from 20,000, or 2022 versus 2021 and the number of priority one incidents that we had for each of those years. The last column here in this will be a column on the next several slides. It's really just kind of a running list of the different types of things that we have been doing over the years to improve our response times and the service that we're providing to the public. And you'll see it's a combination of really staffing, technology, and partnerships. Those are, that has been and will, and is continuing to be sort of the holistic approach that we're looking to do. You might remember in 2015, the IACP did a survey or study of the police department. And one of the recommendations was to have people in the comm center, officers in the comm center, speaking directly to members of the public. We also, at that time, had about 100 incidents that were included in a priority one grouping. Their recommendation at the time was to reduce that. And it was reduced to about 50 different types of incidents are in the priority one category. Obviously, over the last couple of years, we've been increasing staffing, working very diligently to do that. We've been developing partnerships such as our co-response teams in the field with Kern Behavioral Health, the clinician in the comm center, the use of technology, ShotSpotter specifically, our California Violence Intervention Program that we've just talked about a few days ago. That's where we've seen serious and significant reductions in homicides and shootings. But then also leveraging some technology. Veritone is an app, as over the last couple of years with the BodyWorn Camera Program and with some state mandates in terms of capturing demographics and officer stops. The amount of administrative duties that an officer has on every single call has gone up substantially. And this is one of the technologies that has helped work, that we are using to try to drive that time back down so that officers can get back into service. We are certainly working to improve our data analytics. And we capture a tremendous amount of data. And as we talked a couple of days ago, one of our budget or new position requests for this next year is to have a performance analyst in the operations division that will be able to provide some very important data specifically to the operations division, which is the patrol division, and give us a much better idea of how we are performing in the field. We're also exploring a drone first responder program. We have drone teams out and they're working every day across the city. But we are also exploring an opportunity to use a drone as the first responder to a call, to get eyes on, to understand what is occurring. And maybe what's being reported is not exactly what is occurring now. And so it'll help us manage resources, but as well as also to better inform officers who are responding to those types of calls. We also talked a couple of days ago about one of the intentions that we do, we intend to do in this next fiscal year is to expand our impact team. So, this last column, it'll be present in a couple of the other slides as well. But it really is kind of a running list to give you some idea of the different kinds of things that we have been doing over the last several years to reduce our response times specifically, but also to make sure that we are using our resources as efficiently as we can and sending officers to where officers need to be and other resources where an officer is not needed. and other resources where an officer is not needed. Priority 3, 4, and 5. Priority 3 is, as it says there, a potential for injury is present, a hazardous condition. Some examples of that would be, it could be a hazard in terms of a spill in the roadway. It could be a non-injury collision, a peace disturbance, where there's just arguments going on, or someone refusing to leave a premise. Priority 4 are animal control calls. Priority 5 are basically all report calls, or an incident where there is no threat to someone's safety. Here's the data from the number of incidents in each of those priorities over the last year compared to 2021. And again, some of the different things that we have been doing. Bringing annuance back into the traffic and our training sections, so that sworn duties or sworn officers can dedicate their time, full-time, to sworn duties. Continuing to work on staffing, obviously. Professional staff is also a component here, because our police service technicians perform a lot of these kinds of duties for some of these priority calls as well. If we move forward with the budget, as we hope you will, one of the significant things that will change in some of the lower priority calls will be the automated telephonic reporting system. Right now, people are waiting, our community members are waiting extended amounts of time to get a report response, to get a report taken, and then to actually get the report. And we can do much better with some technology that is coming. We'll be able to significantly reduce. And in fact, when you call, you will have the option and the ability through this technology to have your report taken at the time of your call, and it automatically get routed through the system like it normally, like it needs to go. And right now, an individual is having to do that and route that within the police department. But this technology would automatically route these reports to Investigations and to other areas of the department where they need to be. So that is one specific thing that we'll be able to improve our service models substantially in these lower priority calls. Again, here's just some data over the last year. And then, again, some of the other things that we've been doing. We talked a little bit about this, the organized retail theft unit, and the impact that that is having on our businesses. And they've made over 125 arrests in just the first couple of months. But most importantly, I think, is we hope that we're changing the environment in some of our business centers and some of our stores to make them safer, the perception of them certainly to be safer, and to make them actually safer by apprehending those that are responsible for chronic and repeat thefts at so many locations in our city. So when we talk about call-answer times, there is sort of a national standard for public safety answering points. And the standard is that you want to answer 90% of your 911 calls within 15 seconds, or 95% of them within 20 seconds. You saw some of this information just the other day, so I won't stay too long here. But we both, we saw improvements in both of our times, that we're answering the phone quicker in 2022 than we did in 2021. And we are still carrying about 13 vacancies within the communications center right now. And so those men and women are working lots of overtime to make sure that the staffing is appropriate and that all these shifts get covered. One of the things I'll point out is the total telephone, the total number of telephone calls and total number of 911 calls went down in 22 versus 21. However, the number of dispatched incidents went up. Don't know what that means exactly yet. We're still looking at some of this stuff, but it's an interesting dynamic. I don't know if it will continue or not, and what that really means. So response times. There is no national standard for police response times. Priorities and definitions about the number of priorities, how they're categorized, and what the content is varies across police agencies, not only just in the state, but across the country. And we also need to recognize that crimes are not equal in the harm that they cause to our community. And so it necessitates that we prioritize calls so that we have the resources for the highest emergencies. Certainly, our ability to apprehend those responsible for crimes absolutely has an impact on the call volume, which obviously impacts our response times as well. And then, obviously, the public fear and the satisfaction with law enforcement, their law enforcement agency certainly is impacted by our response times. Because if we're not there when they need us to be there, not only does the crime not get handled as efficiently as it should or as quickly as it can, but it causes great fear within our community, and that is something that we want to work toward. When we talk about response time, we're talking about these category of times, from the time that a call is entered to where an officer arrives on scene. So when you hear us talk about response times with Priority 1 or Priority 2, we're talking about the time that the call was entered by the dispatcher until the time that the officer arrived. That is the time that we've captured and refer to as response time. Just for information, this is some response times for the highest priorities for these cities in 2022, or what they publicly reported over the last year. Again, we had a brief discussion about this on Monday, but here is our Priority 1 response times for '22 compared to 2021. The median response time in '22 dropped from just over 7 minutes to about 6 minutes 52 seconds in 2022. And here is the, our Priority 2 response times. As you can see, significantly higher response times. The circumstances are not a lot different when we talk about how serious these incidents are, but there are certainly significant increases in the response times. So I know I went through that very quickly, but I know that we want to get to some important conversations. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any requests? Councilmember Arius.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chief, for the presentation. In a sense, I do feel like we're continuing a conversation that we had just a couple of minutes ago about this. Can you walk me through some of the most common calls that we receive through 911 dispatch related to homelessness, and where those fall on the prioritized call list?
So, that's certainly not a category of call. When someone calls 911 or requests for service, what the dispatcher is taking from them is what they are reporting at the time. So if they're reporting a crime, the conversations are very focused on what kind of crime is being reported. And then it moves to who may be responsible for it. So the call comes in, "Where are you?" Once that's established, "Tell me what is happening." And so through that short, brief, but quick dialogue, there is the crime that's been identified by the dispatcher. And then the conversation moves to who's responsible and what is occurring, and those kinds of things, so that they can provide it to the officer in the field. So, to answer your question directly, there is no category of homeless-type call. It, all, all calls are depending on what is being reported, and what are the behaviors or the actions of the people involved in it at the moment.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think the question comes from trying to get a sense of where we're headed in terms of potentially changing the policy. What you said the other day was, we should only have sworn officers doing sworn officer-required duties. So let me ask you another question. What do we currently have for all priority calls, 1 through 9? Do we have sworn officers responding to all different types of priorities at this point?
No, not generally. When you look at the lower priority calls, there's lots of calls that are being handled within the comm center with an officer in the comm center over the phone. People are being referred to telephonic reporting or the online reporting option. There's certainly animal control calls within the priorities. But there are calls that are probably 1 through 5 that officers will go to. You know, and some of them are very, absolutely non-criminal-type things. So two neighbors get into an argument over something, over a property line, over some watering on the lawn. There's no criminal act whatsoever, but they just can't seem to get along. A police officer goes to that. Other types of, I mean, there are other types of non-criminal-type activities that officers go to, that we go to because what's being reported to us, and it could escalate into something, so an officer goes. But the other side of it is, there is nobody else to go to these kinds of events or civil matters. Sometimes through child custody exchanges. Very often, officers are there to keep the peace. And there's a variety of calls that we go to every day to keep the peace, to ensure that nothing happens. Even though nothing is occurring at the moment, officers go to stand by and just keep the peace. There's sort of the list that I gave you up there. There's, shows you a range of things that we've been trying to do to ensure that we are sending officers where officers are needed, using technology in a variety of different ways, our partnerships. Specifically, our partnerships with Kern Behavioral Health, the clinician in the comm center. We saw just so far this year, since we've had two clinicians that consistently, 80 to 90%, and I think in the month of March, 90% of the calls that were diverted to the clinician, they were able to handle without a police response. We have co-response teams in the field with Kern Behavioral Health that have a mental health worker and a police officer together going to calls, responding to normal calls, but also being proactive into some of these calls where a lot of them are homeless. Because a lot of those individuals have serious mental health issues and substance abuse issues, and they're causing issues in the community. And so we're responding to calls with those response, those co-response teams. But they're also being very proactive in recognizing and understanding who frequently calls or causes issues, and they're trying to aggressively or proactively go target them with services and a variety of things, so that they're not committing other types of criminal acts. But again, a combination of staffing and technology and partnerships, we're really trying to leverage across the organization so that we get officers back and keep them available for the highest level of emergencies. Our impact team, they are primarily responsible for homeless-related calls, calls for service. And so our intention in fielding the second team now is that when there is a call for service, that an impact officer will go to that call, so that a patrol officer in the same area can remain tenet or available for service for a higher emergency call. And so the impact team has calls stacked on them every day. And so some of our businesses might see a longer response time because they're waiting for an impact officer who can go there, has the resources, has an understanding of the resources that are available, has the specific training and understanding of what some of the dynamics are, and can spend much more time working with the individual, working with the property owner or the homeowner, whatever that issue might be, so that we can keep officers available for the highest emergencies. That's just one example of many things that we're trying to do across the organization, because it is so great, the need is so great. And we've talked about this very often, is that law enforcement has become the safety net for so many societal issues, because there is nobody else to call, the police department goes. I think I mentioned this, perhaps at Safe Neighborhoods, was the police department gets called if people get caught behind the gate at a U-Haul at night, when they're locked behind the gate or they stayed out there after hours. The police department gets called for those kinds of things. And so there really is just a variety of things on our workload, and we're really trying to leverage everything that we can across the organization to do that. Again, we talked a little bit about this on Monday, and that includes certainly increasing our staffing, exploring what technology can bring to us, developing partnerships to shift some responsibilities where they can be, but also looking at the alternative, potential alternative positions within the police department, that you have some middle ground where you're not a sworn police officer, you're not an armed police officer, but yet you have more capabilities than what exists within the police department now to handle some of these, perhaps, peace disturbances, some of these arguments that are going on that are really kind of non-criminal acts, but we're there to keep the peace. Is there an opportunity, is there a position that might be there? And we're exploring that.
Okay, great. Thank you. In your professional policing opinion, what priorities are an absolute must for a sworn officer to be present at?
It's a very difficult question to answer, because like we have seen too many incidents across, too often, is...
Well, let me clarify. Because a call can come in, like you've mentioned, Priority 5, but it can quickly escalate to a Priority 1 very quickly. So that Priority 1 is considered a Priority 1, in my opinion, right?
Yes.
So, that said, knowing that everything can elevate to a Priority 1, Priority 2, Priority 3, which of those on that list are an absolute must for an officer to, a sworn officer to be present at?
For clarification, what list are you referring to? So if you're talking about, because many of these, like you said, one of the things we talked about, I think, on Monday, too, was that a call can move up and down the line in a priority, right? And that depends on what resource is going to be used, based on the information that we get at the time. Because someone can call and say, "This happened, very serious incident, but the person is no longer there." It drops to a Priority 2. As soon as we have an officer available, they'll go to it. But if the person returns, that goes right back to a Priority 1. What we're seeing very often is that people call once, and they don't provide us with any updates. And someone returns, but we are never told. And so the call stays in a different priority. And so, and there's a lot of dynamics, I think, that go into this, but we, I want to encourage our community to, when you call for service, to continue to call and update us as circumstances change. Because the resources that we send to that changes as well. And in having an understanding that a crime is now in progress, or again, someone is returned, that significantly changes the priority. From what might be a report call to now we need a sworn officer to go there immediately and arrest the subject, or to prevent some other harm from occurring. And so it's a very difficult thing, because when someone calls the police, they're having a very difficult time. And it could be a serious personal threat to them or to someone that they love. And so keeping them engaged and communicating with us is a very difficult thing. But, so, when you said the list, I wasn't kind of like tracking what you're saying, because it's a difficult thing. Right now, we have about 50 incidents that we've identified as Priority 1 calls. But there are, there are a variety of things that we do that officers still go to. Medical aid calls. So if someone calls with a medical emergency, all 911 calls in our city are answered at the Bakersfield Police Department. If it's a medical call only, then that call gets transferred to the fire department. But very often, the circumstances that are occurring, perhaps, at that medical aid call are such that fire and hall ambulance don't feel safe to move in, and so they stage, and they wait for a police officer to come. It is not uncommon at all for us to get there and realize the police department didn't need to be there at all. But the amount of information that was received at the time, they just didn't feel comfortable or safe for their personnel to go in there. That happens dozens and dozens of times a day. A lot of these scenarios that I'm giving you happen dozens and dozens of times a day.
Thank you, Chief. I think the point that I'm trying to make is that, I'm looking at the numbers for, let's take Priority 7 through 9. That's a little bit more than 50,000 calls. And if the council was interested and willing to take a policy action to say, "Hey, we are just not going to be able to respond to those lower priority calls, so that we can reduce the response times per Priority 1, Priority 2, Priority 3," the council can take that action. Is that correct?
Well, I would be happy to follow the council's direction in a variety of things, but it specifically to say that we're no longer going to, so free, to use your scenario, for a Priority 7 to be like animal calls. I'm not sure what happens if we say, "We're not going to respond to these calls anymore." And so that's why I'm saying that the dynamics of it make it very difficult, which is why we're leveraging technology and other partnerships. Specifically, the technology that I think is coming with our new automated reporting system is going to change the service model for our public, for our communities substantially, where they're no longer having to wait. Now, that doesn't have anything to do with Priority 1 response times. But staffing is. We talked about this. We have 49 police officer vacancies. The vast majority of those, we're carrying some vacancies in the Investigations Division. The vast majority of those, we're carrying some vacancies in the investigations division, but I would tell you, when we get to full staffing, the vast majority of those officers are going to be in patrol. That is going to impact our response times. And that's the most significant thing that I would ask the council to continue to support is getting us to full complement because the vast majority of those officers are going straight to patrol and will be available for these types of incidents. And so when we get to full staffing, even in the comm center, get full staffing in the police department in the field, and then leveraging all of these other technology and other partnerships, I'm quite confident that we're going to see reductions in our response times without the reductions in services to our community.
Thank you. I just think that the average citizen would understand that we, as a community, you know, in order to improve the response times for some of the most egregious crimes that the community is facing, whether that's, you know, harassment or domestic abuse, or any of the most egregious calls like that, that our ability to respond in a much quicker time and get to you in your moment of need is actually going to, it's going to require us to take some aggressive action. And I think that for some of the lower priority calls, we should absolutely consider, you know, just delegating that to it, not respond to it at all, but instead utilize other resources, you know, community service technicians, police service technicians, excuse me. I know Mr. Turner of Seed has brought up some innovative ideas of leveraging, you know, retired citizens to do some of that work, or even young folks who are looking for an opportunity or an entry-level job to do some of that work, to get to some of those lower priority calls. But again, I think that it's this, it's this council's decision to really take a hard look at that so that we can actually deliver on some of the expectations that were produced by Measure N.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just would like to make sure, and maybe I misspoke, that changing or reducing services in some of these lower priorities, there are no police officers going to that six, seven, eight, and nine. That wouldn't change. We have leveraged everything we can or continue to do that to make sure the officers are going to where officers need to be. So that dynamic wouldn't change the availability of resources for the highest response calls. Staffing does, and that's what we're working towards, and I think that is where the most significant change is going to be felt by our community is when we get to staffing.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Cor.
Hi, Chief Terry. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Thank you for being here and thank you for the presentation. In the context of response times, I wanted to make sure I thank you on behalf of the local trucking community and industry here. Just last week, we had the first ever convening of the Bakersfield Trucking Association stakeholder meeting. And I want to give a big thank you also to City Manager Christian Clegg, who's not here, Vice Mayor Andre Gonzalez was in attendance, as well as your team, Lieutenant Ryan Croker and his team. They were so attentive and immediately were addressing concerns that these trucking companies were bringing up and had long, had been long overdue and being addressed. So to have that forum, to have that one-on-one time with officers, with the city as well as your staff in the department was incredibly beneficial. It was reassuring. And I think stakeholder meetings like that, that mirror that in an industry and a community that felt very isolated in the losses that they were having, multimillion-dollar losses and theft of their entire trucks, their 18-wheelers were being driven off of their yards. And so folks really had the opportunity to share their long-pent-up concerns. We had over 75 local trucking companies in attendance, and that wasn't even everyone because most people were busy or on the road. We have over 13,000 locally registered trucking companies in Kern County. This local industry is a powerhouse. It's delivering our goods across the nation, but it also employs people within mom-and-pop companies, as well as some of our larger fleets of over 100 trucks. So it was incredibly important to have that stakeholder meeting for them, and I know your team is working on solutions for them, and response times is a part of that as well for them, and something that they brought up. So I'm looking forward to even the results of those conversations and the improvements that we continue to make. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Gray. Okay. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I'm going to try to be brief. Organized retail theft, we've, I think I heard 125 individuals have been identified as being chronic or repeat offenders.
They've arrested that many since the, that unit started in February.
And how many are chronic or repeat offenders?
I don't have the exact number, but I know that many of them were arrested for multiple offenses. So we've not, I don't know that we've arrested too many of them again after that, but many of them were arrested for multiple offenses.
Okay. And what are we doing to not just respond to an incident, but sort of intervene? What sort of intervention practices? If we have identified individuals who are repeat offenders, what sort of strategies are we employing? Or have we thought about that? I'm sure we have thought about it. I'm just trying to get a sense of...
Yeah, and I'm trying to, I was going to ask you, the scope of your question in terms of intervention, are you talking about the police department intervention? Or are we working with these establishments to help intervene with the sheriff's department? And we're leveraging all of these things, so maybe I can answer your question that way. The reason we formed this team is because the chronic and serial-type offenses that many of our property crimes are, they're crimes of opportunity, and they're serial offenses, serial offenders. And so we've leveraged these resources to do just that. And so we're utilizing all of our different resources to be able to do that and get many of these people into custody. Part of that is the collaboration with the businesses. We meet with our, many of our local businesses once a month. We have an organized retail crime unit that meets with community members and business owners, and they discuss what's been occurring and what are they seeing in their establishment? How can it be prevented? What preventative tools that they are each maybe making within their establishments? That information is shared. The information of who the offenders are who are going into their businesses and stealing from them, pictures are shared, the types of information, vehicles, license plates is also shared. Our people attend those meetings as well, so they're collecting all of that information so they can drive where they do surveillance or where they do investigations as well. And so, but we've also continued our conversations with the sheriff's department, trying to get bed space available for those who are committing these chronic offenses. Assistant Chief Stratton has developed some really good relationships with the sheriff's department, and it is difficult because space is limited and their staffing issues are still existing. But they have been cooperative at times when we, when we say this person is chronically causing some serious harm in our community. But there are a large number of those individuals. I think I gave the example already of someone who was committing some different burglaries and breaking windows downtown on a couple of different incidents. We arrested him, and those people were in custody for about five hours. That is the reality of what we are dealing with. And so as we talk about response times and we talk about leveraging our resources across the city, we're dealing with all of these kinds of things. And so the types, different types of intervention, we're open and looking for every opportunity to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. It just seems to me that when we look at downtown or Old Town and we see the number of property crimes, it really boils down to just a handful of individuals for whom we're calling upon many, many resources. And so it seems like we ought to, you know, really think hard and strategically how to reduce the number of incidents with this targeted population of individuals.
An example of that in the downtown area, our co-response team with Kern Behavioral Health have caseloads, have named and understood individuals who are out in the field, out near the community, and they're going out and contacting them every day, trying to intervene, making sure that they're taking their medication, that they have the services that can be and that they will accept, to help intervene and prevent them from committing crimes or causing disturbances downtown. And so all of that is being done every day. And there's been some significant progress in many of these areas because some of these individuals were calling 911 100 times a day. And being able to focus resources on them, that's been diminished. We have high-frequent...
Frequent flyers.
Yes. I wasn't going to say frequent flyer, but frequent utilizers of the public safety system, and we're leveraging behavioral health resources specifically on those individuals, and we've seen tremendous results that we're not getting those calls from those individuals. And so, again, just very quick anecdote examples, but we really are trying to leverage everything we can because, but the need is great.
Okay, thank you. I have many more questions, but no more time. So I'll make a motion to receive and file. Thank you.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. And with that, we stand adjourned at 5:11, and colleagues will resume at 5:21. So 10 minutes, and let's start again.